Meeting to order, please. For those who care to join me, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yep, I have the final list here, so. Bethany, are you set with attendance?
Like to read the board norms. Debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important, and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and our schools, not politics. Assume best intentions in all discussions. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A second. Um, Jill, is this the point where I would ask for a motion to pull out the strategic plan update?
I'd like to make a motion to pull out the strategic plan update from the agenda.
Why?
Because I don't think we have the people here ready to present.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, so could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Without the strategic strategic plan update?
Well, we have to do the agenda first, yep.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're okay. You're okay, we got it.
Alright, so a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, uh, may I have, the next item up is the discussion and acceptance of the mayoral board appointment of Courtney Collins with comb. Um, so if I could have a motion, please, we can follow with discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any questions for Courtney?
Yay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Courtney, um, we'd like you to take the oath, please.
Where? I can come your way.
Disputables.
I'll be halfway. Is that okay? I'm a teenager, I don't have to.
I know, I know, it's okay, this should be done. I would be there.
I, Courtney Collins, from, I, Courtney Collins, do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear, that I will faithfully execute the office, I will faithfully execute the office, as Rutland City's school commissioner, as Rutland City's school commissioner, to the best of my judgment and ability, to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God. Congratulations. Can I have you sign that? Here you go. I got it. Present here.
Can't give it to her until she's signed.
Here?
Yep.
I didn't realize she was a lefty.
Thank you, Courtney.
Here?
Yep.
Welcome back.
Welcome.
Stephanie?
Crazy.
On May 12th, Mike McKenzie and Zach Carlson lost their wife, mom, and best friend. RCPS lost an incredible asset to our Allen Street campus. Dawn was active in supporting RCPS even before her employment in the district. Her patience, support, and generosity was beyond reproach with students and colleagues. Thank you, Dawn, for always being a shining light in any room you stepped into. Can we please take a moment of silence to honor Dawn? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Do I already do that, or do I need to?
We already did that.
Okay, uh, so we're moving into the public input portion of the meeting. Um, we've budgeted 10 minutes, um, we're gonna extend it to 15 and ask those who speak to keep their comments to two minutes, so we can hear from as many people as possible. So I hand it over to Mary Beth.
Alright, great, the first person is Anna Grace?
They need to state their name.
If speakers could please state their name and the town, their town of residence?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Anna Grace, I live in Rutland City. Um, good evening. This is my first time at a board meeting, and I wish I had gotten involved sooner, but I'm here now, and I plan to stay engaged. I'm here tonight because I'm disheartened. I'm disheartened that our teachers, who show up every day for our kids, are still fighting to be fairly compensated, and it's not because they haven't spoken up, it's because they're not being heard. I know some of you are still new and learning the ropes of your positions, and I completely respect that, but as a parent and a community member, I'm here to hold you accountable. These negotiations have gone on for over a year. My family and I joined the district in the fall of 2023, and at first, we were really impressed by how things went. Um, we got to be involved in Portrait of a Graduate, which was fantastic, and that vision, right now, is ringing hollow, for a lot of reasons. Because the people who carry it out are the educators, who show up every single day, and they're being left behind. Teachers cannot help our students thrive if they themselves are struggling to survive. They're not asking for luxury, they're asking for fairness. There may be concerns with the Factfinders report, but the bigger issue is this: The current system is outdated and unjust. If the board doesn't act, we risk losing some of our best educators, and that's not acceptable to me, as a parent. People worry about taxes, but taxes are going to go up, that is just life, that is the life that we live in, in this nation. We cannot afford to cut corners on our teachers, and maybe that means delaying a phone system upgrade, or looking at other items and reassessing the budget. But you have to let the community be a part of that. We must do better for our teachers, for our students, and for the future of this community. Thank you.
Next on the list is Lindsay Tiverge.
Could you please state your name and your town of residence?
My name is Lindsay Tiverge, and Rutland City is my residence. Which was the beginning of what I was gonna say. Uh, good evening. I am a Rutland City resident, uh, I have two children in the Rutland City Public School System. I was born and raised in Rutland County. I travel a great deal and then return to raise my family here, even at a time when the reputation of Rutland was quite negative. Uh, the city has taken great strides to rebuild, and I'm hopeful the growth continues, but that is also what brings me here today. I'm here to speak about my concern over the long-term future of our schools and our community. As a working parent, I depend on our educators to support in the safeguarding of the physical and mental well-being of my children. These teachers are the foundation of our society's health, safety, and success, and their dedication goes beyond lesson plans. They provide stability, mentorship, and emotional support that shape our children's futures. Without competitive compensation and adequate support that matches the immense responsibility they bear, we risk losing not only our best educators, but also families who seek stronger, safer communities where education is prioritized. That exodus weakens our neighborhoods, businesses, and our overall diversity and vibrancy. The return on investment is clear. Research shows that quality education leads to better academic and life success. Paying teachers competitive salaries attracts and retains talented educators, ensuring students receive the strong foundation they need to thrive. Yet many teachers work second jobs to make ends meet, some leave the profession due to burnout and financial stress. What does that say about how we value education? We must start with fair compensation, not symbolic raises, but real salaries that reflect the critical nature of their work. I urge both the board and the association to prioritize reaching a resolution in favor of our teachers. I know you hear everything I have to say as members of this community as well. I respect and appreciate the work you're doing, knowing you have a very difficult job to do, and you're trying to balance resources for the betterment of Rutland. But investing in our teachers is investing in the long-term well-being of our community, and we should vote for that every time.
I'm sorry, you are over time.
And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Uh, my name is Sarah Voris, and I'm reading a statement authored by my husband, Michael, and I, he's in the back, we are Rutland City Public School Parents of Two.
What's your town of residence?
Uh, Rutland City.
Okay.
Thank you, and I'm directing this to the board and to the Rutland City community. It is not an exaggeration to say that our education system is under severe stress. We believe our teachers are the most important component of this system, and are essential to the success of our schools and our students. We see the increasing demands on the teaching profession locally and throughout the United States. Support from the federal, state, and local levels is not keeping pace with ever-increasing demands, and does not demonstrate the respect for teachers that their work deserves. As the president and his administration make drastic changes to education funding, we need to continue to advocate for and protect our students by allocating funds to places where it is most effective for student learning. Despite what is happening federally, we still have power at the state and local levels to influence how funds are used. Most decisions about education are made locally by school board superintendents in the state. Our board has authority over what gets taught or not, how students are supported, and how money is spent with direct input from the community. Our greatest educational asset is our teachers. Today, we ask, why don't we pay our teachers more? Is it because we can't, or won't? Is our spending on things that actually benefits student learning? Are we just telling our teachers we value them, or using our resources to show them? How can we, as a community, influence change in these areas? As community members and parents, we want our tax dollars spent first and foremost on helping our children learn, and ensuring skilled teachers are attracted to and remain in the Rutland City School District. Today, we ask the board for better pay for our teachers, a salary reflective of who they are as educated, highly trained, and dedicated professionals. We implore our community to ask important questions, and tell our elected leaders we want our tax dollars spent in ways that ensure our teachers know our community values them and prioritizes learning for all students. When we respect and support teachers, we support our children's future. We have the power to reform our thinking and act in ways that reflect our understanding of the immeasurable impact of teachers. Thank you.
Um, I'll stick to what I know best, I'm an accountant. Um, so, just being kind of generous here, I think last year's budget was something like 60 million, it was a bit more, but if we divide that by like 365 days, which is, again, spreading it evenly, which I don't think that the budget gets spread evenly over 365 days, it's like $164,000 a day that we're sinking down the drain tomorrow. And that's money that we've sunk. On top of that, we have parents that, we have like, what, 2,000 kids in our district? And let's just be generous again, let's say like half of them need a babysitter tomorrow. The going rate's like $15 an hour, when you do the math, we're losing like, uh, we're asking the taxpayers, on top of everything, to pay like, an extra $100,000 tomorrow, whether directly to a babysitter, or at a sunk cost because they don't get to go to work. And when I looked at the latest proposal over two years that we're proposing, versus what the Factfinder, uh, looked at, we're talking about differences of like, maybe at max, like $800,000 divided by two years, because that's what the contract is, and then when you divide that by probably property taxpayers, let's be generous again, that's like 4,000 property taxpayers, you're talking about what, like, 400,000, uh, divided, god damn it, it's...
Can we not purge, please?
So we're talking about, like, what, $400,000 divided by maybe 4,000 taxpayers, like $100 a year? I, I don't know, I can't make this make mathematical sense any way I actually look at it. And I understand, we built the budget already, and we voted on it, and now, it seems very backwards to me that we're doing this at this point, um, when this should have been done as a part of the buildup to the budget.
Sorry, you're out of time.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the list is Sophia Perone.
Hello. I want to start off here by listing off some facts.
Can you please state your city of residence, please?
My name is Sophia Perone, and I have been in the Rutland City Public School System since I was five, I live here as well.
Thank you.
I know how to read and write, add and subtract, and have many successful social interactions because of my teachers. Rutland City teachers are some of the lowest-paid teachers in the state, especially when considering population. My final fact, one that I know to be true: No teacher wants to do this. Teachers are sacrificing their pay, their health benefits, their time, possibly their jobs, and importantly, their students' education. No teacher is giddy about the strike. Each and every person in the district will struggle from this. I don't think the school board understands this. Nobody wants this. It's no secret that teachers are grossly underpaid all throughout the country. No one goes into education for the paycheck. Teachers teach because they are passionate about it, they want to help future generations, nurture their minds, and hope that each class ends with a group of students who are smarter and more compassionate than when they arrive. So, to have driven teachers and educators to the point where they must unfortunately not only sacrifice their pay, but the education of their students, should be telling. The issue is not as complicated as it has been made to be. Negotiations and compromise aren't this hard. I personally think that the methods, money, and behavior that this board has exhibited are embarrassing and ill-advised. However, the most important issue still stands. Because of the rigidity of this board, my education is at risk. Because of this issue, teachers are forced to the extremes in order to make their pleas heard. I cannot go in there myself to executive session to settle this issue, as much as I would like to. All I can do, all anyone behind me can do, is beg. So I beg of you. Pay the teachers fairly, prove that you care about our students, our future. Because students, parents, and teachers shouldn't have to beg. I do not stand with you, the board. My peers do not stand with you, parents do not stand with you. As you are right now, you are in the wrong. Listen to the community, because their words echo mine. You need to step up to bring this issue to an end. Settle now, pay the teachers, do the right thing. It isn't hard. Thank you.
You're wasting your own time, you're wasting your own time.
We have a limited amount of time, we can, you can spend it applauding one another, which is wonderful, but we'd like to really hear from everybody, so, um, maybe save the applause till we're, until after the 15 minutes, and then we can...
Are you Noah Perone?
Are you Noah? Or go ahead, you can applaud, I'm just saying, we only have X amount of time to listen, so.
Hi, I'm Noah Perone, I am a Rutland City resident of all my life, and I have come here to address the unfair treatment of Rutland City Public School staff. Uh, there are people, they are people who mean a lot to me. It's them who have helped me transition from a boy to a young man, and to see them treated this way just disgusts me. So, you say that they're asking for unsustainable asks. They are asking for, for a starting wage of the cost of living in Rutland City. If that is unsustainable, I feel that that just shows a lack of your ability to lead and manage funds. Um, but if you want to be an organization working for the better of Rutland City Public Schools and its students, you cannot be making the choices that you are. The strike is starting tomorrow, and it's gonna have a negative impact on almost every student, and that is your fault, I do not blame them. You have known what REA has been asking for, for a year and a half now. Their asks are far from unreasonable. It is in my and my fellow students' best interests that you pay our teachers, that we can finish our school year without issue or interruption. In democracy, you're, you, you don't work for you or your interests, you work for the interests of the people. I haven't, I don't know of any neutral party who has come to the support of the board. Therefore, the people have spoken, you can listen to them hogging, the people are speaking. Please, listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alexandria Perone, I am a Rutland City resident. I am already on record for urging this board to agree to the Factfinders report and to give our teachers a fair contract. So tonight, I'm gonna talk about why I feel this administration and board have been disingenuous when they claim in the press that this is what the voters approved. The voters were never informed that the budget that was put before us in March did not include any room to compromise with our educators. Instead, we heard Mr. Plamenos talk about, quote, "good news stories." At the January 14th board meeting, Mr. Plamenos stated that the taxpayers would be seeing a lower tax rate for the next year, possibly, quote, "by several percent." He went on to explain that while this is one of the tightest budgets he has seen, they did leave some wiggle room, and I quote, "The thing that I want to emphasize here is that while we're working very hard to reduce expenses or defer them where it is reasonable to do so, we also make room for any key initiatives that our various services directors have brought forward. We always make room to continue our focus on any upgrades in buildings and grounds and transportation that are needed," end quote. So he made sure to leave wiggle room in the budget for building grounds and transportation upgrades, but not for our salary, for our educator salaries, despite having already been in negotiations. According to a chart that was shown at that meeting, compensation is going up by 7% or about $3.7 million, but what the voters weren't told was how much of that $3.7 million went to the teachers, and how much went to the administrators. According to Tim Smith at the same meeting, quote, "You will arrive at the preliminary homestead tax of $1.61, and if you compare that to last year's homestead rate of $1.67, that's a six-cent decrease. So right now, we're in pretty good shape, we're fortunate here in Rutland," end quote. We may be fortunate, but our teachers are not. We should never have been boasting about savings while our teachers were working without a contract, to quote Mr. Selski, who spoke at the February 11th meeting, quote, "Although gross pay has gone up, total net compensation in real dollars has remained even, or for many like myself, has gone down. I will not remember this board as the board that lowered my taxes, I will remember you as the board that won't pay our educators." Rutland City has some of the highest-paid administrators and some of the lowest-paid educators in the state. Settle now, agree to the Factfinders mission. To quote Mr. Plamenos, "I don't look at it so much as a benefit as getting our district where it should have been all along. Our teachers deserve better."
You're out of order. You are out of order. We have time for maybe two more. Okay, alright. We have time for two more, the next one is Hillary Peremsky. Please keep it to two minutes, alright, so that the rest of the people have time to speak.
Hillary Peremsky, Florence, Vermont. At this final hour, I would like to implore the board to continue to negotiate tonight to reach a settlement to prevent the strike. I also want to bring the board's attention to an element of this conflict that has perhaps receded, behind many teachers' more obvious vocal frustration and anger. For the past several weeks, I have become increasingly unable to fully participate in my life. The mental health impacts of this increasingly stressful and uncertain situation are such that I am struggling with debilitating anxiety, distraction, dread, and a sense of almost complete hopelessness. I am not resting well or getting enough sleep. I have suffered more and worse migraine headaches than usual, one of which required that I miss a day of school. My body is inflamed, I have quite literally been sick with worry. Worst of all, I have not been present to my kids. I am not talking about the kids in my classroom, my students, who don't know or suspect how much this situation is tearing me apart, because after 17 years of teaching, one thing I can do like a champion, 17 years at Rutland, that is, one thing I can do like a champion is put on a teacher face regardless of how I really feel. I am talking about my own children, who see me crying at home and keep coming over to put their arms around me, but still cannot fully understand what is going on with their mom. The other night after the strike vote, I drove directly to my daughter's first-grade concert. I had to pull over for several minutes beforehand to collect myself. At the concert, all I could think about was this situation I am in, completely out of my own personal control, all because I chose 24 years ago to become a teacher. This has all become a seemingly unsolvable conflict between two monolithic entities, the board and its negotiators, and the union and its negotiators, but I ask you to remember that both entities are made up of individual human beings, all of whom are responding to the stress in their own ways, and to please consider the fact that I am not the only person struggling in my particular way. If a resolution is not reached, I do not know how I will go on this way. I am one of few people in the district who have been through a strike before in my previous district, and this is one of the main reasons for my stress level. I have seen what strikes do to communities, schools, and teachers. The scars run deep, and the effects are felt for years to come. I implore you to act as people tonight, rather than as an unyielding entity, for the sake of everyone involved, and most especially for our students. It is time to sit together, work together, forge ahead, and settle. A resolution acceptable to all preventing a strike would be the best personal and professional news I can imagine right now. I am ready to get back to living.
Next, and our last speaker will be Mary Howard. I'm sorry, I'm gonna, we're also gonna let Sue, Sue speak last after Mary, okay? I, I think you're on here, Sue. Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak tonight. Uh, my name is Mary Howard, I am the state representative from Rutland City, I am a Rutland City resident. I support my teachers. They are so important to our future. Our children are our future. Our community is our future. I respectfully, respectfully, ask you to please, please, let us join together, let us solve this issue, and please, think of the children, and please, let us go forward. I thank you for your time, I appreciate everything that you do on the board, and I appreciate all of our teachers. Let's come together. Thank you.
I'm gonna be very brief. I'm Sue Tannen, I am a teacher in this district, I'm a city taxpayer, I'm president of the Rutland Education Association. I'm here because, as according to our timeline, a strike would start tomorrow if we don't settle. We don't want this, our negotiating teams are upstairs, we're willing to stay all night to make this happen, we'd love our keys back, we want to make this work. So, that is our goal, that is all we've ever wanted, is to teach the city's children. Thank you.
Settle now, settle now, settle now, settle now, settle now, settle now.
Thank you very much for coming, we're gonna ask you to go so we can continue on with our meeting, please. Thank you for coming and sharing your perspective.
Respect.
Respect.
This is an open meeting, you have a right to say.
And that's fine, but just, please, please, let us continue on with our work. And that's fine, but just no, please, please let us continue on with our work. We very much want to settle. We very much want to settle. And so if you'd like to stay, please stay.
Stop. Sorry, that was to you, Stephanie, not to her. I think they're reading. It's okay. It's okay. It's okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, let's take a five-minute recess and regroup.
Just someone had to just step out quickly.
We've got 6:30 at 6:35. We'll start again. And we're going to pick up with Amaya and Amelia and our student rep reports.
RAS enjoyed a school-wide trip to the Paramount Theater yesterday. All students heard about the history of our beautiful museum, and were in awe of the venue. Eric Lhuile, director of the Paramount, was equally impressed with our students' behavior. We have many other fun activities planned this month, including our upcoming field days, where we are looking for parents or volunteers. Our sixth grade will be joining RMS for the first time, a yes plan beginning on June 2nd. Be sure to check out the family newsletter for more information on such things. The April Paws character trait at Northeast was all about showing integrity, and for the month of May, we are talking about all the great ways to be a positive leader. Kindergarten enjoyed a field trip to Wonderfeet earlier in April and did a fantastic job at their May concert with Miss Cole. Second graders are looking forward to their field trip to the Montshire next week, and everyone at Northeast is happy about this warm spring weather, especially for gym class and recess time. We had a great month of learning at Northwest School. The kindergarten students did an amazing job at the concert. The professional school team has been focusing its efforts on literacy this year. We created a data team at the beginning of the year and have been reviewing the data each month. This past month, we analyzed the growth over time. The students are showing a great amount of growth, and focusing on specific literacy skills has been effective. It is exciting as a team to see the positive academic growth in our students. Please check out the latest edition of the PEG TV Learning Lounge. We were able to hear from two RMS students and their impact on Unified PE. This episode was inspiring, and I was honored to be part of the interview with them.
Stafford received official word from NIAS that after reviewing our five-year progress report, our accreditation... accredited?
Accredited.
Accreditation? We'll continue. Our next full visit will occur in 2030, with preparations beginning in 2027. The Vermont Skills USA competition wrapped up on April 11th, and we are excited to share that Stafford students did incredibly well. Fifteen students brought home gold medals, eighteen brought home silver, and fourteen brought home bronze. We have twelve students that are now qualified to attend the National Skills USA competition that will be held in Atlanta, Georgia in late June. Many of the students also won tools and scholarships as part of their prize package. Special thanks to all the instructors that helped guide these students to such success, and our two advisors, Melissa Patterson and Cindy Demigat. On May 23rd, we will be hosting a tree planting ceremony to commemorate Stafford's 50th year. Mike Standard and the students will be planting five river birch trees near our main entrance, representing each decade of Stafford. Our engineering and welding programs worked together to create a commemorative plaque which will be displayed at the site. Our annual rave student car show and barbecue will be held on the same date, May 23rd, in the back parking lot. The tree planting begins at 11:15 a.m., and the car show will start at the conclusion. We would love to see you there. RMS had some phenomenal experiences this past month. Our social studies department had a great World War II unit, and students were able to present the projects they made in our maker's space. RMS teachers spent last Friday being trained on our outdoor adventure course. It was a wet, wet day, but they all came in at the end of the day laughing and smiling. We are excited to host the band Recycle Percussion on the 19th. This band got their start on America's Got Talent, and they also host a TV show called Chaos and Kindness. Their focus on empathy and growing kindness made them the perfect fit for us. We have invited Rutland Town's seventh and eighth-grade students to join us. This will be a great opportunity for students to get to know each other before heading to high school. For Rutland High School, the IBOX Team 2370, which includes 12 talented Rutland High School students, is thrilled to celebrate an outstanding 2025 season, culminating in their third consecutive appearance at the prestigious First FRC World Championship in Houston, Texas. With over 3,700 teams competing globally during the 2025 season, IBOX 2370 is truly honored to be among the top 601 teams to qualify for the World Championship, proudly representing their small but mighty hometown of Rutland, Vermont. The IBOX team competes with some of the most innovative robotics teams from around the globe, including teams from Israel, Mexico, Netherlands, Turkey, and Canada. 2025 IBOX season highlights include an overall season record of 44 and 29-0, global ranking of top 7% worldwide, and a New England district ranking of 20 out of 109... 90.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is Glenn Scott's presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm Glenn Scott. I'm the Director of Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation for the District. And every year, this is the opportunity I get to update the board on our summer projects as we go into summer. Just going to click through here. The bulk of the presentation will be about the projects that we complete, but as you know and as I've shared, that we continue to do transportation throughout the district, general maintenance throughout the classrooms, lots of painting. We have big painting plans this year. We continue to mow the ground and take care of our athletic fields throughout the district, and our fantastic studio team will detail, clean, and be floor-claire, or floor-claire, care, sorry, across the district. I got that one.
Do we have it? Can we have that?
No, I didn't get it out in time. I apologize. I didn't get these out in time for the package. So as I mentioned, we'll jump into the projects that we're doing across the district. Some of these are budgeted through FY '25, some are budgeted FY '26, and a large portion are reserves or grant-funded. So to start with, at the high school, we're replacing the roof over the cafeteria. You can kind of see there, we've had leaks pop up from the winter through the spring. The rubber has delaminated from the roof deck. So and there's also a lot of stuff. There's a lot of penetrations up there that cover over the kitchen and also over the cafeteria. So there's vents, there's hood vents, there's oven vents, there's all kinds of venting and breakthroughs. So water is able to easily get through there. So that roof's going to be replaced in the end of June. That was budgeted in FY '25. The next project is kind of a late add, but we're excited to do this. As you may know, we've rented a house for a long time at 12 Stratton Road. It was a special education slash life skills training area. We rented that through Giancola. We've given up the lease on that, and we're going to transition that workspace and that learning space into the back of the cafeteria. So you can kind of see the map there. You've got cafeteria, then cafeteria A and B, that northern section where the red outline is. We're going to add a small kitchenette. And the purpose of that will be to do cooking classes, but also the continued those life skills, special education training in that area. This is a mock-up of what the space will look like. It's right behind the cafeteria manager's office. This is all grant-funded, so the cabinets and the appliances are all by a special education grant that we have to use by the end of June. So the work, the installation, plumbing, electric will be done by the Rutland City Maintenance Team. Our plumbers and electricians are going to do that. So that's that. High school in Stafford, I've been kind of updating this over the last two and a half years. This is a stormwater project that is regulated and managed by the state. So basically, for any property, I'll just reiterate, for any property that we have that has more than three acres of incorruptible surface, so that's roofs, parking lots, we have to manage the stormwater that runs off of that area and treat it before it goes into the Lake Champlain water table. So we have two areas at the high school, or I'm sorry, one area kind of in front of Stafford, which you see there. Right now, if you drive by, it's a fenced-in, overgrown area. That area will be dug up in a filter system to filter any of the chemicals and debris and oil that comes off of the parking lot. Again, this is 100% paid for by the state, and they also manage this. I'm just the owner-manager, and I'll be overseeing that. It's underway. Behind the student parking lot is the second part of this. Markowski Excavating is taking on the project. And there's another storm area, storm drain behind the student parking lot that'll be catch water and filter it again before it goes in the stormwater basin. So again, all funded by the state. There's no local tax dollars for this project. At Stafford Technical Center, we're continuing the work from last year. So this was flooring replacement. Underneath is asbestos. We're going to replace the first floor and second floor of the east side of the building. This is funded by Stafford Reserves, and that was released last year, so we're working our way through this. There's two steps. As I mentioned, the flooring has to be removed, and the asbestos mastic has to be ground away safely and compartmentalized and taken away. Once that's done, we'll install new flooring to match the other, the west side of the building. Again, this is paid for by Stafford's reserves budget. Intermediate school, last year, we did a complete replacement of the fire alarm system, which was very antiquated and required some immediate updates. So the panel was replaced last year. We got all-new wiring. The second phase is a portion which we did not have and will be added. So basically, if you have an unsprinkled building, the thing you don't want to do is have doors propped open like I have in the one picture there, because if the fire alarm goes off, there's a fire, the fire spreads through those areas. So we'll be installing what they call hold opens or door holds for the classrooms that are in unsprinkled areas. So that will be, that will be over the summer, too. That was only $5,000 portion because last summer, we were able to do the wiring. It's just a small upgrade, but a very big safety upgrade. We've talked about this in Building Committee as well. So in the intermediate school, we've got some potential problems with the deteriorating roofwork and parapet. As you can kind of see those pictures, these, this could become a big problem really fast. So I'm still working on finding a contractor. I've had a number of conversations, and I think we've got somebody that's interested. So we'll have, hopefully have that work underway over the summer. If we can't find a contractor, we'll probably find a way to get the worst parts maintained by our maintenance staff, just to take care and prevent the water from entering the building and continue...
I'm sorry. What is a parapet?
So the parapet, it's architectural term for the front of the building that kind of juts out.
Oh, okay.
So you don't see, you know, that front facade.
Right, okay.
That hides the roofing part. And then at Northeast, this has been a project that I've wanted to do, just because you can kind of see the safety railing, the railing and masonry is deteriorating. This is front and back of the building. Some of this is the original masonry from 1953, when the building was built. Excuse me. So I've been working with Russell Construction to get this done over the summer. Not every step is this way. Some of them are worse than others, but definitely needs to be addressed for safety, trip hazards and that. And then last, for schools at Northwest, this is the rear entrance, playground entrance, and you can kind of see the asphalt's deteriorating. You've got a mix of trip hazards and a lot of unlevel pavement there. So we're going to work on getting that paved, so it's a safety, address the safety and trip hazards as you go into the building. And then lastly, a couple of security initiatives district-wide. Our access control system, so that's the system that you use when you swipe your card to go into the building. It's about, at the end of its useful life, and our service provider isn't doing upgrades to it anymore, so we need to get this replaced. It's not a ton of money because we reuse the wiring that's existing, and the card reader are reused. It's just sort of that, that operational brains there in each of the buildings. So we'll phase that in over the next year. It was budgeted in FY '26. We would have a really big issue if this thing failed for the security of our buildings. And then lastly, the classroom shades. This has been a thing that's, we've needed to address for lockdowns or shelter-in-place situations. We've had a shade that's kind of a paper thing. It's really not a great solution. And so we've come up with this, it's a vinyl ripstop that we're going to hand-make. Our maintenance team is going to make these all by hand and measure them. We've got the measurements for all the classrooms. And basically, we'll just make these the size throughout the summer and install them before school starts again. So that's the last project. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Some good work.
Can you email us a copy of that?
Oh, sure.
So it can be in, or no, it will be in for next month.
But still, can we have a copy?
Yeah.
Because the pictures are good. Thanks, Glenn.
We have the Allen Street campus report.
Good evening. My name's Cara McGuire. I'm a special educator at Allen Street. We'd like to thank the board, administration, staff, parents, and our peers and community partners for the ongoing support.
Hi, my name is Wyatt. I'm in sixth grade, and I like to skate and ski. Allen Street Campus is a fourth through 12th grade hands-on academic program designed to push boundaries embracing growth mindset to build friendships.
We do. So our mantra at Allen Street is work hard, play hard. We focus first on academics and our social-emotional well-being. When we're available for these things, we get to do all the fun stuff Allen Street has to offer. When we meet our school expectations, we have opportunities throughout the day to do things they enjoy and want to work on. Some of these include skateboarding on indoor ramps, biking on the pump track, cooking in our beautiful kitchen, and access to beautiful art supplies. We also have a lot of stuff to do, jogging, skateboarding on Fridays with the Vermont Derby. We have skateboard trips, and now that the kids fight for skills, having improved so much in our pump track, more off-campus mountain biking trips.
Our continued focus is to build a strong culture of positive health across Rutland City schools. Through increased outdoor programming, we're working to support academic success while fostering resilience, empathy, and a sense of empowerment in our students. This initiative is designed to reduce drop-out rates, suspensions, and other negative behaviors by engaging students in meaningful, motivating experiences to improve their academics. The program also supports smoother transitions into mean school buildings and directly contributes to higher graduation rates. Since 2021, Allen Street Campus has proudly maintained a 100% restraint and seclusion-free environment. This achievement reflects our commitment to trauma-informed care, student dignity, and proactive supportive behavior strategies. It stands as a powerful example of how safe, respectful learning environments lead to better outcomes for all students.
So, since coming to ASC, I'm a teacher educator there, my life has improved immensely. We believe in a flat organization, meaning that there is no hierarchy of power there. Every staff member's input is valued and appreciative. There is a sense of trust, love, and collaboration unlike anything I've ever experienced in a workplace setting. When staff feels empowered, trusted, and respected, that definitely trickles down to our students. They feel that. We all know what is expected of us, and the students are very aware of what we do.
Hi, this is my friend Amaya, and she wants me to present for her. Amaya came to Allen Street Campus last year as a fourth grader. Before coming, she struggled to make it a full school day. Now, she is attending full days and has gone up three reading levels. Her math scores keep improving, too. She loves working with plants and helping in the garden. It feels good to make things healthier and more beautiful. She enjoys spray painting and doing other creative projects on campus. When we follow expectations, we earn cool things. Amaya is proud of the progress she's made this year in skateboarding and in biking. She keeps growing in every way.
Kathy.
Hi.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to, for everyone to applaud. That is outstanding work. We are so proud of you. Keep up the good work.
Let's start.
Hi, my name is Lacey. I came to Allen Street Campus this year as a fourth grader. Halfway through the scooter, every day I look forward to unlocking my bike from the rack. After, when I ride, I feel calmer and more focused. I get, I get to ride after finishing my schoolwork. The environment here is different, and it helps me feel more comfortable and in control. Before I came to Allen Street, my mom used to get calls every day about my behavior. It was hard on both of us. Now, things are different. She doesn't get those calls anymore, and she's able to work. At Allen Street, there are no seclusion rooms, because we don't need them. Instead, we're, we're encouraged to use our coping strategies, like taking a break on Mr. Scott's couch or going for a walk with a teacher. I feel safe coming to school now, and I trust every adult in the building. I know the teachers have my back, and they keep us all safe. One thing I'm really proud about is that I no longer rub out my hair when I get frustrated. Now, my luscious hair can grow, and I feel better about myself.
Hi, my name is Eve. I am a special educator at Allen Street Campus. And this year, I am returning to RAS, because my academics and behavior have improved so much. I'm looking forward to returning to my success. I hope next year I can still find time to ride on the pump track.
The wild card is helping me and my, and my friends do better in school. Wild card track, the wild card tracks positivity behavior in school. My class and I have class jobs that improve, that improves our school, like composting and recycling. I love this school, because it helps me be a better person. This is my best year, school year so far. At ASC, we do a lot of hands-on learning. Today, we were planting strawberries and sugar maples. So far, presenting to you guys is my favorite experience this year.
You're, you're one of the few that says that.
Opened in summer 2021, the pump track provides a powerful, accessible outlet for building both physical and mental resilience among Rutland City youth. Centered around movement-based breaks and skill-building, the program has become a highly motivational tool during the school day, helping students improve focus, self-control, and emotional regulation in the classroom. Designed to promote equity and well-being, our pump track ensures that youth from Rutland City and surrounding communities have access to healthy, community-based activities that foster positive mental health. The riding surface was newly updated this April, and further enhancements, including a pollinator garden and landscaping, are scheduled for this spring and fall.
All right. So, skateboarding at Allen Street, we have seen immeasurable amounts of growth in students this year because of their love for skateboarding. Every fall is a lesson in resilience. They have learned that not everything comes easily. They watch their peers excel through practice and learn to work hard to get better themselves. We learn perseverance due to failure and falling, and then we don't quit when things get hard. We take a second to get right back up and try again. I took quite the spill at the skate park this year. I had a bruises big in country crowd. And all the kids came running to check on me, and I got back up and kept skating. Much of our teaching is through modeling, and skating is no exception. As a personal neurodivergence, I really wish that my school was also like ASC when it's growing up.
Thank you, everyone.
The edible landscape project brings organic, campus-grown produce directly to our students and community, promoting access to healthy and engaging activities while connecting youth with the food system. This supports hands-on learning through gardening, nutrition, and sustainability, while encouraging youth entrepreneurship, with plans to procure grants for a student-run farm stand or food truck. Looking ahead, the long-term vision includes using program-generated revenue to fund student
We hope you enjoy our school video highlighting our growth, culture, and climate. We created all the musical, course videos and edit, editing.
Thank you all for coming. We know how hard it was for you guys for Rutland City. Very impressive. Thank you all. Congratulations.
Well done. Great job.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Well done.
Glenn, we've got some tiles for you to fix, I noticed at the end of the video. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Rachel and Kara. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Rachel, is that you in all the costumes?
No.
Oh, it's not?
That was Kara.
Oh, you.
And just so you know, we came to Long Island.
Yeah, yeah, well, I saw the Grinch. Perfect, perfect.
Bye, Rachel.
Alan Street's always a good report. I love your bio on the street.
God, they've got such amazing stuff. I love that program. I think that, what a great way to run it.
Superintendent's report.
Yes, please.
I wanted to speak directly about the potential for a strike and how we would respond to that. I want to say, just for the, for the benefit of the community, that the board has worked extremely hard on this for a year and a half. These are always, it's always challenging to go through negotiations, and it's hard to get to a resolution. The board is working on that right now as we speak, and so we hope that we would come to a good resolution tonight. I don't know, can't tell if that's going to happen or not. We'll find out. But I do want to say, on behalf of the board, they have worked very hard to offer a fair and competitive compensation package. They've tried to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayer and to the city. They are trying to work within the budget, and they are really aiming for not having layoffs or losing personnel. Those are four things that have been really important to the board's team as they've gone through this, and so that's what they're aiming for as they continue the talks tonight. If that doesn't come out tonight that we reach resolution, and if the teachers decide that they, they are going to strike, this is how the district would respond. You know, we would ideally like to stay open, but if we are going to stay open, it would be for educational purposes, and we want to make sure that we can safely staff the buildings. So, the way we're going to approach this, if there is a strike tomorrow, parents would be notified like they would a snow day, and we'd ask that all, all the students stay home on, for tomorrow. We would expect all staff to come in, and we would assess to see what we have for staff, okay, especially with the RAA group, the teacher group. As we make that assessment to see if we could possibly open on day two or day three, we would communicate that out to the community and to parents. But we have to basically take a day to figure that out. What, so we wouldn't have students on day one. Potentially, we might not have students on day two, and as long as the length of the strike, we'll see. Therefore, we wouldn't have classes, and we also wouldn't have any extracurriculars or co-curriculars, athletics, any events at night, after-school programming, like Tapestry and Epic. We would all either cancel those events or postpone them. And that, trying to make those up would be dependent upon the length of the strike. Buildings, buildings will be closed to students, and as I said, we would be reassessing daily and communicating daily to see where we're at. If things change, we would communicate that to parents. If we've talked about the potential for opening some buildings and not all, we just have to see what we have for staffing, and that, that'll be a decision that we have to make based on that assessment. We're also working on trying to make sure that we can provide meals to students who want them. And so, Bianca McKean worked with our food service folks for the last couple days, trying to make a plan for that. We think we have a plan in place, and I think we would be communicating that early tomorrow morning. Potentially, we would have drop-off points around the city, and if people are interested in, in getting a meal for their students, they'd be able to pick those up at, at those different drop-off points. Because of the way federal regulations work, we wouldn't be able to drop off at every single household, but we'd have dropout, drop-off points scheduled or mapped out around the city that would help make that work, and the walk or the drive would not be that far. So, that's where we're at right now. We will keep the community informed. I know that the team is still working as we speak, and we hope, wishing them good luck. We hope that, that this comes to a good resolution. It may not tonight, but we know that eventually we'll get to a conclusion, and we hope that we'll have a good, fair contract, and everybody will be somewhat, somewhat pleased. So, if the board has any questions on that, I can answer them.
I did, I don't really have a question, Bill, but I did, I did see on the Rutland City Facebook page, I think, they've already released a little bit of information about the meals, about the food.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, I think that's already out there, so parents and families can plan.
It lists the drop-offs?
Yeah, I think there's a link to some drop-offs already, so I think, yeah, so I think people, if they keep sharing that, and then whatever information you obviously put out to families, so, yeah.
I do have a que, just a clarification, I think, because I've had it asked of me. Not having extracurriculars or sports is because of, because we don't have the staff for it, or just a clarification?
Yeah. So, you know, the way we've tried to work through this is we've tried to get advice from other folks around the state who might have been involved in something like this, and we've also looked at the guidance that the Vermont School Boards Association puts out there for, this is what happens in a strike, and this is how you plan for it. We looked at how we would staff, let's say, sports, for instance, and, you know, some of the folks who are, are teachers who are striking, who might be striking, are also coaches, and some are not. We don't think it would be equitable if we had some sports running and some sports not running. Or let's take sports out of the, or let's continue with sports and talk about activities or music, things like that. Don't think it would be equitable if we had sports running and not our, you know, our other after-school activities. So, the, the approach generally recommended is that, you know, you're going to cancel those, those events for now, and the hope is that the strike wouldn't, wouldn't last that long, and we'd be able to, you know, maybe there's going to be a few days missed, but we try to get right back to it. Especially if we, you know, we're talking about sports, get to the postseason, which will be coming up in, I think, June 1st, I have in my head. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's right, but is that right, Greg? Somewhere around there, yeah, yeah. So, I think we have time. We've talked with the VPA, and, you know, missing these games wouldn't be held against our teams. We'd get, get into the playoff mix still, but, you know, we want to get to that point before June 1st.
Thank you.
I know this is a ways out, but I've had a lot of people talking about graduation, and, and as I said, I know it's a, it's in the distance, but parents are very concerned as are high school students who have, you know, worked very hard to get to this point.
Right.
Is that even, I mean, I would hope that the strike certainly doesn't last that long, but if it were, is there a way that the kids can graduate, or?
Yeah, I, I, I feel confident that that will happen. I guess I shouldn't jump the gun and say, I know how long a strike would last and how, how that would, that would affect makeup days and things like that, so.
Well, these three days, the first three days, they would not have, the students would not have to make up, correct?
Well, it's possible that, you know, our contract has 178 student days. The state requires 175 student days. It's possible that the board could say, we would waive those days for these kids. And so, that gives a little wiggle, wiggle room, but I, I wouldn't want to make a prediction of how that all would play out. You know, graduation is June 12th, and so we'd, it's still a ways away. I think we can get there. I don't imagine that, that we'd have a strike that long. But I, I just don't want to predict anything yet.
I would certainly volunteer if you need the help.
Okay.
To make sure it happens.
Thank you, thank you.
I think we've, a few of us have certainly said that in other meetings, too, like certainly let us know how we can help with anything.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I know, like, this coming weekend is the, is the Troschmore Dance, and I know we've, you know, we have, that's something, you know, I was, apparently. And I know we've, I, you know, we have, that's something, you know, I, I guess parents do put money into extra, extracurricular activities and whatnot, but...
And the colorblind.
It's a pretty important night, so I think some of us have definitely said, you know, we would help release that go on.
But can that go on if it's, they're, they're still on strike? The building will be closed and?
Yeah, um, I hate to say it. I haven't, I haven't talked to Greg about that at all and I, I don't, I don't even know the location. So I think, I guess we would, that's something that we, we try to assess and try to get a sense of where are we over these next couple of days. So I wouldn't want to speak for Greg or even, we haven't had a discussion about dances yet.
I think this is a pretty important one. The kids have, again, looked forward to it and, you know, spent money.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually got a very nice email from one of the high school students, who very appropriately and politely voiced what you're saying and, and hoped that we could work hard to try to find a resolution. You know, that was, it was a great email. I appreciated it. And, um, so I wrote back and said, yep, we're, we're really working hard to try to solve this. So I hope we get there.
Do you think that you could email the board, uh, in, in the next few days and update us on Fraschmore?
Sure. Yep. 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 We can, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Happy to help.
Do you student reps have any questions?
Graduation is my question.
Okay. I think that was the closest at this point, but we'll keep you updated.
When is scheduled to be the last day of school?
The, uh, currently the schedule is June 11th and then graduation was the next day. Because we wanted to keep the seniors one more day.
That's very nice of you.
Yeah, that's nice.
That's your final graduation present.
I've, I've been asked about that yes plan and how all of this would play in if there's a strike and...
That's a great question too. And so that's another, it's kind of like graduation. So Greg, when does the yes plan start? I don't know. Steve might know too.
28th of May.
28th of May. Okay.
Not too long.
28th of May. So that would be, you know, again, it's hard to predict how long this would go for. And so today is the 13th, we're, you know, yes plan is the 28th. We have, we'd have to also finish up classes, talk about exams, all those different things that come in between, how we, how we would try to address each one of those issues. So I can't predict without knowing what, how long the strike is actually going to be, if it, if it is actually going to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone, any more? Oh, Amelia.
Do we know anything about how final exams are there? For the high schools?
Yeah, I think similar for all those, those, all these different things that are coming down the line. Um, if, let's say the strike is a day. Let's say the strike is three days. Let's say the strike is five days. That would, that would affect how we try to map out the rest of, the rest of those days.
Is there a hard deadline for entering grades for students?
Um, you know, I, I don't, not necessarily. I think what we'd have to just consider is, okay, let's say we have, I don't know, let's say if we have a five-day strike. We've got five days. How do we, how do we address those days? How do we get, if we need more instruction, instructional days, how do we get those in, in place? How much time do we need for exams? And then maybe that, you know, maybe we're going to have some makeup days at the end. Maybe we're going to cut into yes plan a little bit. That, it's, that's kind of the puzzle that you're trying to put together. And you can't quite figure out what the puzzle is yet because you don't know how many days you, you have to figure that, figure out. But this, we'll, we'll be working on.
And I know for the public, this isn't necessarily, um, you know, factual answers, but you know, it's a still a very fluid situation. So it's, you know, there's been lots of meetings daily, even right up into evenings till bedtime. So, you know, it is being worked on to give, you know, definitive answers. So, and you know, unfortunately, at this point, we can't give a complete definitive answer. Best at the moment.
I'm just going to, I'm sure on behalf of the whole board, thank you, Bill, and Bianca and Pam and the rest of the administrators for putting, putting together a plan, uh, that is fluid, as you said, Stephanie, and not concrete and ready to, ready to be nimble when needed and, and give, you know, the best outcome we can, obviously, to the students. Uh, so thanks. I know you guys are putting in an incredible amount of hours, you know, everybody here in, in the room administrator. So thank you for that. I think on behalf of the whole board, I'm assuming, right? So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Do you have more?
I just skipped it out, yeah.
Um, so moving on to committee reports, uh, Ryan is upstairs. Is there anybody here who's on the policy committee? I'm drawing a blank.
No, but I would, we, I can do it.
I think I was at, I was at that meeting.
So it looks like we have a number of policies that are here for first reading.
Yeah.
Uh, so we discussed, um, we had to add a, for the first reading, a new policy, which is based off the, um, following the guidelines from the state that we had to put into place. So it's a post-revatabing from the state. Um, we changed policy 5620 for the asset inventory, I believe it moved up to 10,000. Yes, up to 10,000 or more in value. Um, policy 7611, just, um, I believe that was just updating again based off the, um, guidance from the state education and policy 8330, selection access to materials. That was just, we just changed the name of the policy, grammar updates, minor edits and whatnot. And again, to align with guidance from the state. So those were first readings. So I did, yeah. A motion. A motion to a for, for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, Sarah, building.
Uh, Greg Beckray. I keep doing that. Glenn made my job a little easier tonight, which I love. Uh, so we met on, uh, May 6th. Um, and Glenn gave us a bunch of updates. He said that he has a bunch of summer projects, which he just went over for us. So thank you for doing that. Um, he also wanted, he also always, um, reminds us how his staff allocates a little differently during the summer as they tradition, they transition from the school year to the summer. And, um, bus drivers and aides provide transportation for tapestry, field trips and tutoring. They also help with landscaping, lawn mowing, trimming, and gardening. Custodians perform detailed cleaning, floor care, and painting of all the buildings. Um, I'd just like to point that out because, um, he's talking about, uh, they always look for efficiencies too in what they're doing and, and how one of their painters, um, has like a whole detailed system of what painting and what building on what wall, on what door. And it's just, I'd just like to point that out.
Yeah, it's a spreadsheet at that.
A spreadsheet, on a spreadsheet. It's amazing. And I just, I'd just like to point that out because people think, you know, bus drivers drive buses, custodians clean toilets. But no, our bus drivers do lots of different things and our custodians do lots of different things. So they're very hardworking folks and, um, as a custodian myself, I just always like to point out. Thank a custodian when you see a clean floor. Uh, there are fewer building projects this summer, but they're bigger and they will keep the staff equally as busy. Um, we review the big projects. Do-dee-do-dee-doo. And then, um, the next building meeting is scheduled for June 3rd from 5:00 to 6:00. It is possible that at that June meeting, we might do a tour of some of our ESAR product, projects that were recently completed so everybody can go see, um, all the beautiful projects that were done with the ESAR money that we received from the COVID stuff. So, um, I'm very excited for that one. And, uh, he kept on time. He literally did that in 16 minutes and it was very impressive. And, uh, then we adjourned. So that's my report.
You?
Yes. Okay. Uh, we met for 14 minutes.
This is even more impressive.
Because Glenn stole one of our minutes. So, one minute. So, uh, we also met on Tuesday, May 6th, the Finance and Strategic Planning Committee. Uh, we discussed the legislative process on the Education Transformation Initiative, including the current draft of the H454 that's being reviewed by the Senate Ed Committee, uh, right now. I don't have another update on that at this time. But the bill does address key elements of that initiative, including a new foundation, uh, funding model, class-size minimums, shared calendars and resources, and a process for updating school boundaries. Uh, the bill would also provide that a report on final recommendations would be issued in just October of 2025, so not that far down the road, uh, by the Commission on Future of Public Education in Vermont. Um, and, um, we all know and love Ted and so that was impressive that he was able to keep that to 14 minutes. So, he's very thorough, as we all know, Ted. So, and I am always grateful to the fabulous notes that he gives me. Uh, and our next meeting is scheduled for June 3rd, 6:00 to 7:00 PM, which might get hijacked if we are able to, we'll combine those committees and invite the whole board to join us that night to potentially, uh, tour the, uh, amazing projects that were done with ESAR, ESAR funds and really get a, a good look at the amazing work that Glenn and his team do.
And we're going to take a school bus to do it.
So that would be an open meeting in, uh, Sophia, if you want to come with us.
Yes, Sophia. Yeah. Okay. And I think that's it from Finance and Strategic Planning.
Okay. Um, any unfinished business? Any new business?
I do. Um, I would like to recommend a policy that we come up with a policy. I have no new business at the moment.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
I entertain a motion to go into executive session with the purpose of consideration of contract negotiations, the premature release of information regarding this subject, which would place the board at a substantial disadvantage. We'd like to invite Bill Olson, Pam Reed, who's not at the moment present, Ted Plamenis, uh, Andrew Snow, Bianca McKean, and Bill Muab.
Not Bill. Not Bill.
Not Bill. All right. Bill's not invited.
Personal Bill.
Uh, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for the extra work you've had.
Yes.